Hi everyone, I'm John Schulte, pastor of Christian Education and Discipleship, and I want to welcome you back to the fourth session in our study on 2 Timothy, part of our series, Looking at the Pastoral Epistles. I'm glad you're with me this morning, and again, if you're new and this is your first time with us, that's terrific, please follow along, be able to grab your Bible too, as I've done here, and we just go verse by verse through today, it's going to be chapter three, I think we'll cover the whole chapter, and if you want to catch up on some of the sessions that I've taught prior to this, you can find the 2 Timothy online on our church website, but you can also find the first two studies that we've done in the Pastoral Epistles out of this series of three, 1 Timothy and Titus, on our class website for the College of the Bible website, which I'll throw up the address to, and you can get in on there and catch up and so forth on your own time, and enjoy the first two studies, and you'll be right there with us. But anyway, we got a lot of things to do today, and one of it is pretty exciting, because there are certain verses in chapters in the Bible that have become famous. For example, like 1 Corinthians 13, which most people know is the love chapter, and you hear a lot of that chapter come out, let's say, at a wedding or something like this. And today, we're going to hit a very famous verse, speaking about the Bible. And so, I'm excited that we've got that, that's one of the highlights of the study in 2 Timothy, and we'll get that today. So let's start right out, and it's very interesting, Paul's going to begin this chapter with two lists, and he loves kind of creating a list, I'm glad he does, because it kind of makes it a little bit more specific, drives some things home, and very applicable to life. It's a beautiful writing style that Paul has, and we certainly see it here. He starts out first with things that aren't good, and then he follows it with a list of things that are good, and then he ends the chapter on a high note that really is basically the thesis of the whole book, and maybe all of the pastoral epistles, with the inspiration of Scripture, which we'll get to in just a minute. But anyway, let me get right into that first section, the first list, starting with chapter three, verse one. "But realize this, that in the last days difficult times will come, for men will be lovers of self, lovers of money, boastful, arrogant, revilers, disobedient to parents, ungrateful, unholy, unliving, unloving, irreconcilable, malicious gossips, without self-control, brutal, haters of good, treacherous, reckless, conceited, lovers of pleasure rather than lovers of God, holding to a form of godliness, although they have denied its power. Avoid such men as these." That's through verse five, and then going on to verse six. "For among them are those who enter into households and captivate weak women weighed down with sins led on by various impulses, always learning and never able to come to the knowledge of the truth. Just as Janus and Jamborees opposed Moses, so these men also opposed the truth; men of depraved mind rejected in regards to the faith. But they will not make further progress, for their folly will be obvious to all, just as Janus and Jamborees' folly was also." So that's the first section, verses one through nine in the chapter, that kind of puts out the list of things that are not very positive there. And so, let's go back and really take a look at that for just a few minutes, because there's a lot of stuff packed into that. First of all, verse one, he says, "But realize this, that in the last days difficult times will come," and I underline that, and you can join me by underlining that in your Bible as well, because when we hear the last days, the Greek inference there is not in calendar time, but in epochs of time, and Paul is writing from the time that of Christ, you know, in his first coming, to the second coming of Christ, that epic of time in which we're all living in, Paul was living in it then, we are living in it now, all right? So we're talking a little bit about eschatology, or the theology of end times, the end things, things that will happen at the end. "In these last days, difficult times will come." That's powerful. You know, we can expect that, we can expect difficult times to come. As a matter of fact, those times will increase, and he talks about that in verse 13, we haven't quite got there yet, but we will, but let me just refer to it now, chapter three, verse 13, you can look over there. "But evil men and impostors will proceed from bad to worse, deceiving and being deceived." So this will grow, these things are going to happen, these difficult times will continue, difficult times for the church, difficult times for Christians. May not be economics, that may play a part into it, but really, he's talking about spiritual difficulties, where there will be persecutions for Christians, and things will get tougher and tougher to be a Christian and to live the Christian life. So we need to be prepared and ready for that. I was talking to somebody the other day, particularly about this passage, as I was preparing for class, and they said, "Well, you know, it's because Christians, particularly in the United States, have gone kind of soft, we've had it pretty comfortable for many, many years, and so that may be changing for the church in the United States." Well, that could be true, we have to be prepared for that, and we have to often go back to these passages and be reminded that from the time when Christ was first here to the time when he comes again, things are going to be difficult, and the closer it comes to his appearance again, his second coming, will be even more difficult. We're going to experience persecution, and it's going to be a challenge to stand up for our faith and what we believe, and to be open and honest with that. So just be prepared for that. "In the last days, difficult times will come." And then he goes into what's going to happen, all right? What are those difficult times, what are they going to look like? Well, he said, "For men will be lovers of self, lovers of money, boastful, arrogant, revilers, disobedient to parents." I thought that was an interesting one, you know, that pretty soon it won't matter, we won't be listening to our parents, you know, there will be no respect for parents, it will be a breakdown of the family, the fabric of the family unit is going to be broken down, and there won't be respect for parents. Well, boy, a lot of these in the list, I think about our own society and the situations in which we live today, and I go, man, you know, I can see it. I think there's been a breakdown in our family unit in respect. I see a lot of young people who are not respectful to their parents, and we need to have that respect for our parents, even as we get older. You know, my parents are still living, and yet, I still need to respect them, and that's one of those things about the Ten Commandments, you know, that we have to hold. This is one of the Ten Commandments that really actually has a promise, that if we do respect our parents, our days will be long, you know, there'll be the reward of a good life, and so how important that is, and so I thought that was interesting, he puts that down, disobedient to parents, ungrateful. People won't be looking at life as living a life of gratitude and gratefulness, which is what we're called to do as Presbyterians, right, in our reformed faith, is to live a life of gratitude. Well, there'll be the ungrateful, the unholy, unloving, and then I underline this particular word, because it really hit home, particularly with Paul, and knowing Paul's writings, the irreconcilable, they will not be able to be reconciled. Well, when you read Paul's writing, particularly the books 1 and 2 Corinthians, which whole, you know, purpose, the whole idea, the underlying theme in that book, is to be reconciled to God, and that reconciliation. But of course, we know that reconciliation is a relationship in which two people have to work at it to make it happen, you know, particularly when being reconciled to God, which is the part of Corinthians that Paul is writing about, and that means that we have to come to the realization of our sin and our separateness from God, and then to be able to state that, confirm a whole lot, you know, grab and say, yeah, you know, I'm a sinner, and then to respond to that free gift, that grace that God has given to us, so that we might be in relationship to Him, and then of course, living a life of gratitude after that. We've talked about that, and we certainly hit that hard in 1 Timothy. So if you haven't seen the 1 Timothy series of studies, you know, jump over on our online platform there, on Teachable, and learn, and think about what that takes. First of all, we have to realize, to be reconciled to God, that we're sinners, that we're not reconciled to Him, and we have to be open to confess our sin, and be pliable to that, and that God will work in us, this grace, and remember, Paul went to Timothy in the means of grace, the preaching of the Word, the administration of the sacraments, we participate in that, and then we live a life of gratitude. So here we have, people are not doing that, they're ungrateful, we're living in that time, and they don't want to be reconciled, they don't want to see this separation, they don't want to admit it, they don't want to be a part of it, they don't want to have that openness to say, hey, you know, I need to come to repentance, and then maybe be reconciled to God, or reconciled to my neighbor, you know, that's a part of my responsive love to them, not hating them, loving them, how can I do that? I can open myself up to reconciliation, I can look for the possibilities of being reconciled to people. What an important part of the Christian life that is, and yet, and we're living in a time when people will not be open to that, they don't want to be reconciled, they want to hang on to their hate. So I underline that, because it is such, it speaks so powerfully to, you know, to our time, and the list, you know, the one listed before that is unloving, you know, we want to hate, we live in a time of hate too, don't we, where people are responding in anger and hatred and so forth, and yet, we need to respond in love, looking for that opportunity to be reconcilable, to reconcile. And then he goes on to malicious gossips, without self-control, brutal, haters of good, treacherous, reckless, conceited, lovers of pleasure rather than lovers of God. So, you know, we'd rather have pleasure than giving up the things we might need to give up, because we love God, and we want to see that love for God manifested through ministry to others, and sometimes that means even in our stewardship, that we become stewards of things, and we realize the things we have are not our own, and when God calls upon them to do a great work, we let God have them, we let them go. We are just like what happened at the, you know, at the Passion of God, Christ, where the disciples were preparing for the Passover, for Jesus' triumphal entry, and they went to a man who had a young colt, a little donkey that no one had ever ridden on before, and asked for it, and that man, it was his, of course, but he was a good steward, it wasn't, he realized everything was the Lord's, and when they said the master has need of it, he let it go, and sometimes that's what we need to do. But we're living in an age where people wouldn't do that, that's not something that's a part of that, they would rather have the pleasure of having it, rather than giving it. And then verse five, I underline that, because that's a fascinating passage of Scripture, "holding to a form of godliness, although they have denied its power." Worth underlining it, in other words, looks are more important than what's actually happening inside us, you know, real change, real moral change, that means that we have to be changed morally, and when Paul was writing in 2 Corinthians 5:17, he talks about that. You want to be reconciled to God, you're really talking about real, true, you know, relationship with God, then all things have to become new, and that means a moral change within us, that then manifests in our lives. But there's a lot of people who don't want to do that kind of work, who don't want to go through that, you know, need for repentance, but just want to look like they have it, look like there's a sense of integrity in their life, you know, but Christians are called to live a real life of integrity, which means that inside us, that has changed, and that when nobody's looking, we live the same way as if we're out there in social media, or out somewhere else in public, you know, that we live the truth, both behind the scenes, but also publicly, we have to have the both. And Paul, and we discussed that and talked about that in our 1 Timothy study as well, and here he is, he's bringing it up again. We can't have just a form of godliness, we need to have that holiness and godliness, which have been a theme of both of these letters that Paul wrote to Timothy, that those people needed in Ephesus, hey, you gotta live a godly life, you know, and you want to pursue that holiness setting apart for something, for God's work, truthfully, not just saying it or making it look like a show when you're in public, but your personal life behind closed doors is nowhere close to that. And we're dealing with a lot of that, that's not very authentic, that's, we're living in that kind of that society today, so that's something that we need to do. "Although they have denied its power," you know, part of accepting and the realization is the power of God for salvation, and the power of God to change you, you are not in control, but you're giving that control over to God, and that is going to be very, very difficult in these times. But Paul tells them, and there were a lot of people in the church in Ephesus who were dealing with it, that was one of the problems, that was it, and he says, "Avoid such men as these." Don't do that. "For among them are those who enter into households and captivate weak women weighed down with sins led on by various impulses," and we certainly hit that, there was a group of women in the church in Ephesus that were following these leaders and following them astray. These guys weren't honest, they weren't authentic, they hadn't been changed, it wasn't a moral movement, it was more just saying certain things, and, but not really doing the work of our own, changing our own lives and being open to the Holy Spirit changing them. And there was a group of women in the church that were led astray from that, and again, he's using, he's talking about it there, you can look at our 1 Timothy study and get more on that. But I love the passage in seven that counts for these women, but a lot of people who I've seen in the church, when they don't really understand that it's a moral change within us, where we become new creatures in Christ, as Paul wrote to the Corinthians, that, you know, it's something new, it's giving up control of our lives and giving it to God. Seven, "always learning and never able to come to the knowledge of the truth." We see a lot of that even in the church today, because people jump from one church to the next, one great, oh, that's the kind of the happening place, or that's a great speaker, teacher, or whatever, we're going to follow him for a little while, and then when the next one comes, we run somewhere else, and when there's too much ask of us, or where we begin to realize, it starts singing in, that we need to make the changes necessary, oh no, we don't want to do that work, we pop over and start somewhere else. "Always learning things, but never applying it." You know, we know a lot about the Christian faith, but we've never applied it into our lives, and Paul is confronting that in that church in Ephesus, and he confronts it to us today, and we need to think about that. Hey, are we always learning but not applying, you know, are we got a lot of head knowledge, but not enough heart knowledge, you know, where the truth is really something? Have we been changed in a moral way, and how are we becoming a new person in Christ, different than what we were before? And that means hard work, it's difficult, it's challenging, not easy, but it is honest and truthful, and God honors that. And then he uses an example, he's talking about the people, you know, he gives an example from the time of Moses, but he's really talking to those teachers that were in the church, hurting the church, because they weren't authentic in their relationship with the Lord. He said, "Just as Janus and Jamborees opposed Moses, so these men also opposed the truth; men of depraved mind rejected in regard to the faith. But they will not make further progress, for their folly will be obvious to all, just as Janus and Jamborees' folly was also." So those things are exposed, they come to, you know, to the truth. We know in the end, as my mom used to say, you know, the proof is in the pudding, if you've got the mix right, if you've got all the ingredients right, in the end, it will be shown, and people will taste of it, and they'll know. And so, those things can't go on forever, they will be exposed. As the prophet Isaiah said, "The light will shine into that darkness," you know, and we'll see that. Then he begins the second list of what we really need, you know, these are the things we need to avoid, this is what we're going to get into in these end times, but while we're in this epic of time between Jesus' first coming and his second, here's the list of things that we need to do, and he says, "Now you follow my teaching." Yes, let's follow Paul's teaching, the ethical person who understands it's a moral change, who, you know, who was knocked off the horse and realized the voice of Christ, and it changed him forever, and his whole direction and point of reference in life changed completely. Let's follow that guy who's authentic, and his conduct, purpose, faith, patience, love, perseverance, continuing on, and we know he was very persevering, had to be at this point in his life, as he was sitting and changed, don't forget that. Paul's writing this while he's in a dungeon in Rome, waiting for his death, he knew what was going to happen here. So let's be, let's listen to this guy, because it's going to be truth, you know, nothing is sharper focus than when you know your life is on the line, right? "Persecutions and sufferings, such as happened to me," and he's mindfully goes back, "at Antioch and Iconium and Lystra, that what persecution I endured, and out of them all, the Lord rescued me." Out of all of that, the Lord rescued me, how encouraging that is, if we stay authentic, you know, and we know that it's about moral change, and that when we've changed morally, these things are going to come out of, these good things, patience, love, perseverance, you know, faith, purpose, all will come out of our life naturally, because we've been changed morally by a spirit beyond our own, by the Holy Spirit's power that does that for us, and God will rescue us, He'll show us to have had an authentic life, that will have eternal consequences, other people will see that and come to a saving knowledge of Jesus Christ because of it, and that's how important that is. And then in verse 12, he says, "Indeed, all who desire to live godly in Christ Jesus will be persecuted." Wow, you know, you know if you're living that godly life, because you will receive persecution, that is just what's going to happen. I don't always like to hear that, honestly, I'm kind of afraid of it at times, but the fact is, it's true, we will be persecuted for our faith, that we're living in that authentic way, and so we have to hang on to the Lord, knowing that all things will work out for His glory and honor, and that's what we're really living our lives for. When you become a Christian, you say, hey, my life is no longer what counts, what counts is what God wants, and God's life, and so we give our lives to Him, and we say, use us however we can. And so, be ready for that, but verse 13, "But evil men and impostors will proceed from bad to worse," as we mentioned earlier, here we are at that verse, "deceiving and being deceived," it's just going to happen, so we have to stick in the truth of the Word, we have to stick in our relationship with Christ, we have to stick together as Christians too, that fellowship of the body, that worshiping together is so important, and strengthens us and encourages us to stand up and to be counted, you know, to live that authentic life. We can't do it on our own, and we're not asked to do it on our own, we're asked to do it as a group, okay, you know, in the body of Christ, and that's the power of being a part of a church, even in this time and pandemic, when we are separated, and we still come together virtual online, or we come to our outside court-side worship service, because we know that we're strengthened when we are all together as we face this life of persecution, it's only going to grow. And so, 14, "You however continue in the things you've learned and become convinced of, knowing from whom you have learned them." You've learned them from someone who is authentic, you know, and it's not just Paul, you know, and he's talking to Timothy now directly, and he reminds Timothy of the authentic people he learned it from. He says, 15, "And that from childhood you have known the sacred writings, which are able to give you the wisdom that leads to salvation through faith, which is in Christ Jesus." And of course, we know that Timothy, and we talked a lot about that in our first study on 1 Timothy, that Timothy became a Christian because of his mother and his grandmother's faith, and that's how powerful it is, faith to faith, as Paul writes, even in Romans, how important that is, our faith will lead to others' faith, our faith will lead to our children's faith, teach them in that way, make sure they think about it. Now, they may, excuse me, they may have rejected it in the beginning, they may not see it all, but you keep in there, you keep encouraging them and supporting them and reminding them of the love of the Lord Jesus, and how He transforms lives, and there will be a time where they will come back, and they will see it, and the Holy Spirit will work in their lives. How important it is, just as it was in Timothy, Timothy came to faith because of the faith of his mother and grandmother, and Paul is reminding him of that. And then we get to one of the greatest passages of Scripture in relation to the Word of God, because this is the thesis statement of the two books, and probably all of the pastoral epistles, as I said, how important that is, is the Word of God. It always goes back to this, hey, you're in tough times, you're being persecuted, get back into the Word, stay strong. You want to live an authentic life and be morally, you know, changed, it comes from the Word of God, nowhere else, nowhere else, that's the whole key here, to know that, and this is where, one of the primary places we get it. Paul writes, "All Scripture is inspired by God, and profitable for teaching, for reproof, for correction, for training in righteousness." What an important passage of Scripture. Let's go through that before we finish it out, verse 17, let's go through verse 16, "All Scripture," and we saw earlier, as, you know, he's talking about Old and New Testament stuff, the writings of Peter, he already considered to be Scripture at this time when he wrote this, you know, and other writings that now are in our canon in the Bible. So Paul accepted, don't let anybody fool you or teach differently, Paul accepted the writings of the other disciples as Scripture, as he did his own here, knowing, not that it was his own words, but he said, "Inspired by God," those words in Greek really mean breathe out, you know, breath out by God, God breathed, he was involved in that, everything that's in God's Word is there, because God wanted it to be there, and God knew the personality and the experiences and, you know, and the style of these men that he used to bring his word about, and he took that personality and all those experiences and wrapped it up to get his word out exactly the way he wanted it to be. And so, I think that's really wonderful and important, and it's profitable for teaching, like I'm doing right now, you know, to be able to teach the Word, that's what it is, get into the Word, it's God, it's profitable. For what, what does it do? When you hear the Word, the Holy Spirit begins to work in your life, and the first thing you get is, "Therefore, reproof." That's kind of a hard word, because in today's world, we don't like that, our society doesn't like that, it is meaning, it points out sin, that's what that Greek word means, reproof, it points out when you're doing something wrong, and people don't always like to hear that, you know, they don't want to recognize that. But it doesn't just stop there, it does something else, which is really cool, and you got to keep it going, it says, "for correction," and the word for correction in the Greek, and this is the, this is the only place it's used in the New Testament, is that word in the Greek for correction, okay, we interpreted correction, but literally, it could be stated this way, "for helping people to their feet who have stumbled." Isn't that beautiful? That's what that word correction means, you're helping people back on their feet, you're not just pointing out their sin, it's not just, you know, approve, but yes, when they recognize, that's the reconciliation, that they've stumbled, now... But yes, when they recognize, that's the reconciliation, that they've stumbled now, it's also used, the word of God is also used to help them to their feet after they've stumbled. When they've realized they've stumbled, no, you, you want to guide them and help them to their feet. How loving and wonderful, uh, is that, you know? So God's word is to help people on their feet, you know, when they realize they've, they've stumbled. And that's wonderful. And then, uh, for, for training in righteousness, of course. So then to continue to live a life of holiness and godliness, which is one of the underlying themes of first and second Timothy. How do you do that? Well, you do that by getting into the word of scripture and seeing. And when you get into the word, you'll begin to live that life of righteousness. So, you know, God points out those areas where you're separated from him. And yet he also helps you come back into a relationship with him, be reconciled to him, and then live in that holiness and righteousness that he calls us to. And that's what God's word is all about. And then verse 17, we end the chapter, we're coming to a close, uh, 17. So that the man of God may be adequate, be adequate, equipped for every good work. How can we be adequate? How can we have everything that we need and be equipped for everything that God calls us to? We can do that by being in his word. Well, that's good news, folks. So we're encouraged to stay in God's word. Well, you're doing it right now by, by being a part of this series of studies, uh, by your involvement in our church worship and, uh, online and so forth. Uh, you are being equipped for what God has called you to. What a joy that is, let's celebrate that. And, uh, I'm excited to be doing it with you. All right. So that's our chapter, powerful, lots of good stuff in there. Uh, we've got a couple of more sessions to go as we jump into chapter four. Next time, I'm looking forward to that and I will see you then.